The February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Oxegar, you have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So for roll call council, councilmember Nutting is overseas with some family members and is asked to be excused. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by councilmember Mahoney and a second by deputy mayor Steinmetz. All in favor? Looks like unanimous, six-zero. Thank you. Do we have any correspondents not previously received by council?
No, mayor.
Thank you. So it's now time for comments from the public. We're asked, we ask that you please keep your comments respectful and then keep in mind anyone speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be asked to leave the meeting. So do we have anybody signed up to speak? Thank you. Oh, wow. Love that participation. So when your name is called, you'll have three minutes to speak. Just please state your name and your city of residence. So the first person signed up to speak is Kathy Scott.
Good evening, Des Moines City Council members. I'm Kathy Scott. I live on Marine View Drive in Upper Woodmont. And I would like to express my opinion regarding how paid parking would affect the marina usage. Every day, I walk at the marina and the Des Moines Creek Trail. On Saturdays, I participate in an event that takes place every Saturday morning at more than two thousand locations in twenty-two countries across five continents. It's called Park Run. Park Run is a free 5K event, which happens at nine AM every Saturday at the Des Moines Creek Trail. And all of you are welcome to join us. Participants come from neighboring communities, Berrien, Federway, Kent, Auburn, Bainbridge Island. Runners, walkers, joggers, families with strollers and barkers, all enjoy the beauty of our trail. Our largest number of participants has been ninety so far, and one week we had fourteen, and that was because it was fourteen degrees out. So for a number of years, we've not asked any of people to pay for parking. Parking, paying for parking, may have a negative impact on a significant number of regular participants. They will need to find parking further away or pay to park. One of the core principles of Park Run is that it is provided free and weekly to the community it serves. Charging access to closest available parking spaces creates a clear barrier to this mission. The marina is the largest and most common communal place within Des Moines. Paid parking will also affect families living here and from neighboring communities. They will see the gate fees, and many may choose not to visit. Instead, they may head to Seahurst where a fee is not charged. This is not a benefit to Des Moines as we are currently planning a Marina Steps project with a water feature for everyone to enjoy. I do understand security and crime, one of the main reasons for returning to paid parking. But perhaps lowering the gates from dusk to dawn could be an option. If that is not possible, I would request keeping the cost to a minimum, so all would be welcome to enjoy our beautiful waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up, we have Matthew Kimberly.
Good evenings, councilmembers. My name is Matthew Kimberly. I'm a resident off of Marine View Drive just below the Masonic Center in Des Moines. I'm here for speaking about the preservation and adaptive reuse of the Des Moines Masonic Home. It's been a landmark on the sound, almost a hundred years old. Tearing down the building on property and leaving a vacant lot runs counter to Des Moines' own municipal codes, which vows to ensure the retention of aesthetically and culturally pleasing surroundings. The EIS draft even states that demolition fails to preserve this important historic aspects. My main concern is the EIS reports fails to include major environmental impacts for local residents in the area regarding landslides. My street is on Two Thirty-Ninth below the Masonic Building. We have a large water culvert that is at least twenty inches in diameter. During rainstorms, it gushes into the sound even, and even during the driest parts of summer, we have water flow. Where is all that water coming from? From the top of the hill on the Masonic Center. There's a massive amount of water retained on the hilltop. Our lots in Zenith were designed to be large enough to account for water drainage due to glacier tail material we have in the area that is above a loose rocky layer. Let's see. The DOT is running into issues as well with the light rail project off I-5 and the Two Seventy-Second exit. They're finding that they're having the same unstable soil conditions. We're approaching the ten-year anniversary of the Oso Slide, where forty-two people lost their lives. The mayor of Seattle just vowed to plant three trees for every one tree removed. Trees clean the air from the water from above, the air traffic from above. They consume over a hundred gallons of water a day, and they stabilize the soil. I call for adaptive reuse, alternative, and proper ESI reports that accounts for landslide and water flow over issues for the surrounding residents. Thank you.
The city manager would like to say something for a moment here.
For those that were at the meeting last week, I apologize because I'll sound like a broken record. But I did see that a number of people were signed up to comment on the landmark. You can absolutely comment to the city council. That's encouraged. I just want to note, though, that the city council is not the decision-maker for the demolition permit or the SEPA process. The SEPA decision will be made by the city's SEPA official. We also have an open public comment portal that is the place that all your comments that are made, that you want the SEPA official and the city's consultant to consider, those need to be made through the city's website. So you can make your comments here tonight, but those won't be considered in the official SEPA process. So if you make them here tonight, I would urge you to go to the city's website, follow the link to that portal, and then enter your comments there, because that's the only way that your comments can be heard. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Bill Lynn Scott.
Bill Lynn Scott, I'm Des Moines, the Marina District. And good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, councilmembers, everybody else gathered here tonight. I wanted to thank you for a great meeting on the Marina Steps. It was outstanding. It was well attended. It was very informative. You know, this thing started, some people say a million years ago, but actually, I will say it started when the council jumped on a bus, went downtown Seattle, looked at the Harbor Steps and said, "We need something like that here." So when you look at that seven-year period, I wish we would have had about two other meetings exactly like this one that were full of information, and I think the community would have really benefited from it and felt involved. But, you know, the good news is we're close to having a communication briefing to the council that's going to talk about ways to improve it. I think we've got a lot of hope and faith in this council and a new city manager at some point in time that going forward, you know, we'll have better communications around our large projects so that that inclusive feeling, we feel like we participated along the way. That said, I really like what was proposed there. And it clearly focuses on public use, and that's both residents and visitors. It also kind of cements the area for that public open space. We're surrounded by Beach Park, Outlook Park, Soundview Park, Fishing Pier Park. We got the promenade around the north parking lot. So I think it's a great thing that's going on there. I would like to suggest that the city consider inclusion of a couple other collateral projects as a part of finishing this up. One is Fifth Avenue, the cul-de-sac. It's been before the council before. That would eliminate an impossible turn in the city streets. The sidewalk on Cliff Avenue is a hazard to pedestrians. You cannot hardly pass another pedestrian on it without stepping off onto the street and then back onto it. To cut into that bank there and widen that so it kind of reflects the promenade would be a great deal to have. And you could use the dirt to fill in the bank. It's right next door. And then I think it would be nice to have, you know, some of the, I'd call it the sidewalks that lead you off Twenty-third that connect with Fifth or the cul-de-sac from Fifth that connect with Cliff so that there's this entrance to the top of those stairs. Otherwise, I think it's going to feel unfinished. We're going to walk down the same place and find a wonderful set of stairs. Anyway, thank you so much for the comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Bishime. Bishime. Well, thank you.
Yes, my name is Gary Bishime. I'm a resident of Des Moines. We live between Two Thirty-Sixth and Two Fortyth on the hill. And I'm rising in support of the prior speaker that talked about the use of, the preservation of the Masonic Temple or home. The devastation, the devastation that could be caused by the leveling of that and pouring of concrete could have on our, our home, the homes above us on Marine View, and the homes, especially in the seashore area below. I don't want to be part of that, the same thing that happened up north. And I don't think you do either. And it would, I appreciate your comments, Mr. George, about forums and information on that. But there's a, it rests on you guys. If you can't do anything about it, if it's up to some state bureaucrat or some council or some other person, it comes down to you. You guys are in charge of our city and lady mayor and councilmembers respectively. It will come down to you guys. If you didn't do anything, we have a disaster. Either down our whole slope, down to the water, destroying the seashore community, or it rolls down and it entered Des Moines proper. We're going to have a disaster that's not, not even thinkable. So I rise in preservation of the home and Masonic Home and urge that you get a geological, independent geological and/or engineering study of the water content, what the retaining wall would do, those kind of things to prevent that disaster. I don't think any of us want that on our conscience to worry about it. And so I close there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next, we have Barbara McMichael.
Good evening, Mayor Buxton and members of the Des Moines City Council. Barbara McMichael, I live on Thunderbird Drive, close to Mount Rainier High School. So I was really excited this afternoon to get my issue of Des Moines City Currents. And here where it's talking about the comp plan, I see, I was thrilled to see that the top priority mentioned in the survey from area respondents is preserving natural space. So that dovetails perfectly with what I want to talk about this evening. A couple of things. I'm so glad that the Port of Seattle, thank you, Chipper, is here this evening to talk about the land stewardship plan. I have complained before about the fact that the one public comment period that was on Zoom was not very accessible really for people. We could only write in the chat, so there wasn't really any give and take, which we're all talking a lot tonight about public accessibility and just being able to be involved in our government and the decisions you're making. So I appreciate that you invited the port to come tonight to talk more about that plan. And I really hope that you'll have some questions for them. The port did fund, back in two thousand and seventeen, Fort Terra to come to our different cities and do tree canopy studies and discovered that while the optimum tree canopy recommended for cities in the Pacific Northwest is forty to sixty percent, we came in at twenty-nine percent. That was in two thousand and seventeen. We have lost tree canopy since then. So this really is an issue that the port has pointed out to us, thanks to their funding of the Fort Terra Study, and yet they're continuing to need to develop. And I know that some of Chipper's, some of the plans that the port has worked on talks about tree replacement, but there's, there is something to be said for keeping large, mature trees. That's a part of our landscape, a part of our birthright. So that's, that's point number one. And the second thing I want to talk about is, in terms of speaking about public comment periods, really, and I know it's hard in these, you know, post-COVID times, but the public comment period that was offered to citizens to vocalize their concerns about the Masonic Home, and I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. George, to, you know, protect, you know, make sure that people get their comments in the right place. But it was frustrating. Twenty-seven people showed up, or did I get that right? Twenty-seven people showed up, and only twelve people actually testified. So there was an accessibility problem there. So what Lloyd and I, with our little, you know, Preserve Des Moines Masonic Home, have said is, just show up. Make your opinions known. Maybe you can plan for another public forum that is more accessible to your citizens to voice their very real concerns about the Des Moines Masonic Home. So thank you all for your consideration and your service.
Thank you, Barbara. Next up, Steve Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor Buxton and members of the city council. Some of you may know I moved here a year and a half ago from Alaska, where I have a strong background as a communications specialist for two branches of government. So with that in mind, I know the city has embarked on a task toward improved communications with its residents, its businesses, and those visiting the city. And I know a report will be discussed here on May, on March seventh. Still, my question is, and it's a reasonable one, what is taking so long? Since hiring an engineering firm with a communications division to study the problem over a year ago, the only thing we've received are infrequent and excruciatingly vague updates on this process. Meanwhile, meaningful changes could have been made within three to four weeks of announcing the commitment. The city's website could have undergone an overhaul and been in place for six, nine months. So this is taking far too long. The way this process has been communicated could have served as a wonderful model for improvements to communication with regular and detailed updates. Instead, it's a stark reflection of the city's deeply rooted communication problems. And these problems have worsened in some areas since then. You know, if the city is genuinely serious about improving communications, please stop waiting. Hire a communications specialist, someone who can shoulder the burden for the entire city and not let individual departments set aside their specialties for other work. Hire someone who can write clear, concise sentences, adhering to sound grammar, punctuation, and structure. Someone who can remove jargon from documents. Someone who can manage social media. Someone who can take photos. Someone who can edit videos. Someone who can help build the kind of engaging website that just about every other Puget Sound city already has and has had for decades. All of that is missing right now, all of it. Do you realize when you click the link for meeting packets on the city's website, it takes you to May eleventh of last year? Not today, May eleventh of two thousand and twenty-three. The website is a mess, and this poor guy's going to have to go find a portal to comment on it. A communications specialist could have identified communication gaps that existed in a meeting last month. And the gaps are reflected in some social media postings since then that nobody here should really, really be expected to be able to identify because you're not communications specialists. That's why I say please hire one. Please don't do the following. Don't say this is how we've always done it. I've heard it a dozen times already. Please don't hire someone on retainer to handle communications. You will not be a priority. I can assure you of that. Thirteen months ago, I talked individually with councilmember Mahoney and two former city employees on ways to improve communications. The offer still stands. No charge, no judgment. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Next up, Tina Orwell.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, neighbors. Tina Orwell, I live in Des Moines. I had two items for tonight. One is to stand in solidarity about keeping the landmark in the sound. And I definitely will enter my comments. But, you know, this majestic building is part of our history, and it's really woven into our community. And just even driving up tonight and seeing the sunset glow of that building, you know, that is something that can never be replaced. Even when I'm flying home and I'm getting near SeaTac and you look down, you're like, I'm almost home, right? You know? So I would tell you that Senator Kaiser and I, you know, did reach out to the developers, and we did try to pitch the, you know, the tax credits and things that could happen. Would love to have more time to explore further. We haven't had a lot of traction. The other thing I would say is, is the environmental piece does concern me, too. It would be good to know more. And of course, I live on the bottom of the hill, but I also live next to the gas line to Maury Island, right? So there's some very important structures down there. Of course, nothing's more important than my neighbors. But, you know, again, it would be helpful to know. So again, thank you. I will submit my comments. The other reason I came tonight is to thank you. You know, I teamed up with many of you, and of course, with Senator Kaiser around airport because our community is very impacted by the airport, and I know you're here tonight. And we're very excited that we're moving forward policy that would really, thanks to you, help those homeowners that have failed packages. And so we are trying to advocate for a certain amount of resources, but again, the bill's moving. We hope to get it to the governor. And again, it's been a great team effort. We also, you know, I think we're feeling hopeful that we'll also have some additional resources for air quality interventions for our community, too. So it's been a great team effort and just want to say thank you.
Well, I feel like giving you an applause. In case you don't know, it is quite a special treat to have Tina here at any time, but this is right in the middle of session. She's probably not getting any sleep, and she probably hasn't eaten in twelve hours. And she took her time to come up here and advocate on two fronts. And she's worked very hard on some of these airport bills advocating for our citizens. And so I deeply appreciate her, and it's unbelievable that she's here tonight. So thank you, Tina. All right. Next up, David Brongart. Did I say that wrong? Okay. Did you want to comment tonight? Did you sign in because you just thought you needed to, to have a seat?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. No worries. Just sit back, relax, and enjoy. Okay. Thank you. Next up, Lloyd Little.
Thank you, Mayor Buxton, members of the council. I would like to go over how this draft EIS for the proposed Masonic Home demolition fails the public. The current city-appointed SEPA official who signed off on it, Denise Lathrop, appears to be in over their head, as evidenced by the draft EIS. They do not appear to understand what's going on on those hillsides. Neither do the consultants they hired. And it's about to potentially bring five million pounds or more of mud and water down on Des Moines residents' heads. This draft EIS is completely unacceptable and must be redone. We asked for a ninety-day extension to be able to read the nine-hundred-plus-page document, to understand it and see what else is missing. That was denied. We asked for a public, open question-and-answer meeting to answer questions about this failed draft EIS, and that was denied. We're told to send in our comments for the final EIS where these will be addressed. Well, who oversees the final EIS? Denise. In addition to my understanding, there are no public comments when the final EIS comes out. It's over at that point. Denise, in an email to me, said that the final EIS is prepared for decision-makers to inform them and make decisions on the proposal. Well, who are these decision-makers? I asked Denise that question in an email. No reply. From my own research, it appears likely that is also possibly Denise. Denise gets to approve their own work, pass it to themselves, then sign off on any permit decision they make. The city-appointed SEPA official, to use an analogy, is judge, jury, and executioner. End of analogy. Where are the checks and balances? This is the USA. We have checks and balances here. Who is liable if people get killed and buried under mud and their homes destroyed? Who do surviving family members seek redress from? We've heard a lot about the city attorney has advised city officials not to talk about this proposal because they might get sued by the developer. I'd like to ask the city attorney to officially advise any and all city officials who may be liable if people get killed and homes collapsed and neighborhoods condemned. I would also venture to say that the lawsuit of the public brings for having their family members killed and their houses destroyed is going to be a lot bigger than anything the developer brings. This draft EIS must be redone with a complete and adequate plan for a retention system that would be in place before any demolition began, if the permit were approved, so the public can see the plan, comment on it, understand it, and ask questions about it to make sure their lives and homes are protected and safe. We'd like to see an independent party, someone like WestDOT, look at both hillsides and address all possible scenarios of not having a retention system in place during heavy rainstorms or atmospheric rivers, and what a safe retaining system would require were there a demolition of the existing retainer system. Leaving it as-is works, too, with an adaptive reuse of the main building and grounds. We're okay with that. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Keep Des Moines world-class. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next up, George Pettibone.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, other associated people. Hope you can understand this real closely because I live in Zenith. I live right across the street from this thing. It's a hundred, it's one-point-three-million square feet of dirt. We subjected my neighbors to looking very carefully at our analysis. We sent you guys copies of our analysis. It is really, really something. This thing has three big giant wells on it. It absorbs millions of pounds of water every time it rains. If there was a great big mudslide, as we have guessed at or presumed at, I'm a professional contractor. I'm not, I'm not normally in the business of guessing it stuff. All of the numbers in our paperwork is accurate. But what if it did explode? What if the side comes down and you've torn down the retaining wall and you've torn down the building? Gas explosions and electrical fires could happen. Buildings could explode. People could get killed. What if it rains for five days and you got eighty-million pounds of water and dirt and rocks coming down the hillside, going all the way to the bottom? Seahurst Park in Berrien, I was there two hours ago, three hours ago, and they still have the bulldozers, and they got big trucks, and they got scoop shovels trying to clean up a mess from a hillside at Seahurst Park in Berrien. In two thousand and fourteen, they're on their ninth year trying to stabilize the hillside above a big, massive park. And the people were all shut out of their homes for about six months, a long, long time ago. It was on the six o'clock news two nights ago that Seahurst Park was closed because they had to bring in all of the trucks and all of the scoop and shovels, and they're cutting down trees. What if there's ongoing lawsuits? People need to look at this thing ten years, nine or ten years later. So it seems that it never rains in Southern California. Seems I've heard that kind of talk before. It never rains in California, but girl, didn't we warn you? It pours, man. It pours. It never rains in Southern California. Written by Albert Hammond some twenty or thirty years ago. Weather is changing. There's a really big change. From Santa Monica to San Diego, mudslides are knocking houses off of foundations, knocking buildings down, rushing mud and rocks and stone. So get ready for a storm. Could be two different storms. One is tragic, and the other is lawyers. When the lawyers come, the mudslide will be the first storm. The lawyers will be the second one. The lawyers will be the second one and it's going to be huge. I hope that you also look up the word concurrency. Concurrent and certificate of completion. There is no concurrency in the EIS. I will get back to you. We'll be sending it in in writing, but concurrency is a real good new buzzword. It means you're supposed to tell us what you want to build. Thank you very much.
Next up, Elizabeth Christ.
I just thought I needed to sign.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So that is all the names of people who signed up. Has anybody come into the meeting tonight intending to give comment but did not realize you needed to sign in? All right. Next, next we have committee chair reports and our municipal facilities committee met this evening and we still have been unable to, to elect a chair at this point because of vacancy of councilmembers, but I've asked Councilmember Mahoney to report out about that committee tonight. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm three for three on delaying the appointment of chairs. For the meeting tonight, we discussed the work plan, things like getting updates on Marina Development, Redondo, the CIP and so forth. It was just laying out how we'll have our meetings and what the subject matter will be month by month. We did talk about the signage over, on the overpass of Wesley with the words Des Moines and what the components will be and how it'll look and stuff. And I can tell you, it's very impressive. You can link the meeting and I think the information will be attached, so folks can see that. And then the other exciting thing, one of the most, for the last six years, I know myself and Mayor Buxton and I know Councilmember Nutting, we had been champions of the triangle park on the north entrance as you come in. If you don't know where it is, how Marine View Drive flows out and it splits into Fifth and then, and then Des Moines Memorial Drive. Well, there's a triangle and it's always been, as a veteran myself, it's been one of those items that's been a sore point. Well, when we passed the bond, what was included in that was, was updating that look and feel and, and so forth. And I got to say, the preliminary work that I've seen was spectacular and it's something not only will it honor our World War I veterans, as it was intended to do originally, but you will be proud to come in from the north end of town. So that's exciting and I know those things will be out there as well. There is going to be a public comment portion in this and I encourage you all to participate. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have our city manager's report and I'm going to hand the baton off to the city manager.
Great, thank you, Mayor. We have some special guests tonight to give some presentations, so I will start by asking a representative from the Des Moines Yacht Club to come up. We have Commodore Debbie Manetti, who's going to provide a presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff and residents. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and update you on the club events planned for the 2024 boating season. Our club has been a member of this community since 1957. We have over 300 members and are located at our original property. Our mission advocates safe boating, promoting good fellowship and boating and family boating. In our recent past, we were the first to be recognized by the Northwest Yachting Magazine's Champion Award for the most energized yacht club in the Pacific Northwest. We look forward to an eventful year in 2024. We are committed to supporting our members, providing leadership in the boating community and continuing our community engagement by our club and members here in Des Moines. We have strived to contribute to the betterment of the local community. Last year's contributions provided of our variety of organizations with donations. Historically, we have donated nearly $10,000 to various organizations such as Des Moines Senior Center, the Des Moines Food Bank, SR3, and the Legacy Foundation, and many more. Our club events planned for 2024 include March 16, we will hold our 25th Annual Swap Meet, which is open to all of the community around the sound and many boaters coming in from all over. These boaters, they will come and shop for some incredible bargains and patronize our local establishments. April 14, we will be participating in the Tacoma Yacht Club Marine Daffodil Parade. We have participated for many years and will have both a flagship and a decorated boat representing our club and city of Des Moines with the event theme, Time to Shine. May 8, 7 p.m., our yacht club will be hosting the Dollars for Scholars Award Event for many outstanding Mount Rainier High School students and will be giving three scholarships this year. DMYC has been involved with this program since 2008, providing 50 scholarships totaling nearly $50,000 through our Navigating the Future Scholarship Fund. We have a growing scholarship fund that can support this program in the foreseeable future, all made possible by the support of our club members. And the reason for my visit here this evening, May 11, the DMYC South Sound Opening Day of Boating event will take place at 3 p.m. and is open to the community. Included in the handout that Brian Wood just handed out to you is a formal invitation with our schedule of activities. We are planning our flag ceremony, the reading of the city proclamation, thank you, Mayor, and all past mayors for taking part in this, and the blessing of the fleet. As in the past, we will be focusing on bringing many visiting clubs here by boat and will be promoting area activities. Our objective is to demonstrate that Des Moines is a great boating destination. We are working closely with Scott and the Marina staff to pack the Marina with visiting boats. I will be back sometime in April for the reading of the proclamation into the record. July 4, you will find many of our boats at the Des Moines Marina for what we hope will be the next fireworks drone show. July 19 through 21, we will be participating in the Des Moines Waterland Celebration, both in the parade and supporting the gathering of the classic wooden boats in the Marina and delivering what we hope is 100 wooden hydroplanes for the kids' activities, surpassing the 85 we contributed last year. This is one of those great projects, giving us a chance to connect the old and the young. Seniors in the Wesley Woodshop and the kids with Waterland Hydros. June, July and August, our members, along with everyone else, will be enjoying our Marina and waterfront activities, the Saturday Market, music in the park, et cetera. There are more plans in the fall and holiday season. We are continuing to grow our lighted boat parade by partnering with other boating organizations and tenants in the Marina. Now, if we could just get the weather to cooperate. I will return to update you on those activities later in the year. We are a contributing part of this community and we promote our city as a great water destination wherever we go. We are proud to call Des Moines our home port. In closing, please know we appreciate your efforts in leading our city and the emphasis you are applying to the Marina redevelopment. You saved the north parking lot with the replacement of the bulkhead and you created an outstanding promenade and recreational area for the public to enjoy. These keep, these things keep getting better and better every day. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commodore. This next report, we're going to do a new segment here where we're highlighting some of the community groups in Des Moines that are doing great work. As the council knows, but the public might not know, the council sets aside 1% of the general fund for our Human Services Committee to allocate among groups that apply, apply to the city for funding that do charitable work throughout the city. And so this is one of those organizations and I'm proud to introduce Nichelle Hilton from the Backpack Brigade to talk to us about her organization.
Hello, city of Des Moines. Thank you so much for having me. Looking forward to the weekend and I know a lot of people have lunch on Friday, right? You have, you save your lunch money and you go do your business meetings on Fridays and you go out to lunch. Now, I want you to stop and think if that was your last meal until Monday breakfast because for our students, that's what it is. We find that the homeless children in the school districts identified through the McKinney-Vento Act as inadequate nighttime residents, that means they're in a shelter, street, car, hotel, or doubled up. They rely solely on the free breakfast and lunch at school. So that lunch on Friday is sometimes their last meal until Monday breakfast. So that's what we come in. We're Backpack Brigade. And so what we do is we pack weekend hunger bags with seven different menus to feed, right now, 4,500 children a week in 96 schools. We have our standard menu, kosher halal, vegan, gluten-free, Hispanic, and Asian-American. We also send home to the schools a cold bake that has gogurts, cheese sticks and apples for a perishable kickoff to the weekend. And I'm trying to get little chocolate milks. And we've been doing this for 10 years. It's our 10th anniversary and we are pleased to have funding and support from the cities we are in. We are in four school districts. We serve all of Highline, Renton, Bellevue and Seattle. Slide. So I started this. I'm Nichelle and I was running a food bank, did it for 10 years, went to a training, found out about weekend hunger. I was like, how is this a thing? We have food banks, we have meal programs. But the more I deep dived, I found out that the MKV, those homeless students are left alone a lot. So we can assume for really good reasons. Parents are working, they're education, but we also know for really bad reasons. So what do they have access to? They're too young. We're talking eight-year-olds, can't go to a food bank, can't go to a meal program on their own. And then we have a whole population of unaccompanied minors. These are children over the age of 12 who have no adult in their life. So what do they have access to? Their backpack. Now, one of the things that they said in this documentary I watched called A Place at the Table, was if what happened to our children in another country, we'd go to war over it. But it happens every day, right here in your city. And so for these children, it's not just about missing a meal. It's not having the ability to do their homework. It's falling behind in school. It's not having the privilege of being a child. And so you see here, chronic illnesses, asthma, anemia, it all is playing a role in how they eat. So we want all of them to get the best education, to not fall behind. We want them to go to college and be just active members of our community. So we want that for every child. So like I said, we have the seven menus. We are volunteer. I am paid. I have one other person and 156 to 200 volunteers a week in different shifts. We purchase all our food, so we have nutritional control over what we put in the bags. We have a nutritionist on our board and we have a survive, a thrive, and oh boy, if we could get that, that would be awesome, guidelines to our bags. So we have wonderful volunteers that prep, pack and deliver in their cars. Slide. Here in Des Moines, we do all of Highline School District, but here in Des Moines, we're in Des Moines Elementary, Mount Rainier High School and Pacific Middle School. And those are the numbers of weekend hunger bags that each of those schools are getting for 69 students. Go hungry in your community every week. So we try and put the stop to that with the menu of their choice, which the menus come from dietary, religious and cultural needs so that we cover all the needs from a student from A to Z. Slide. And these are some of the survey answers that we send to the schools. These are from kids, these are from family support workers. And to see one of these bullets that says it's more than food, it's a chance to feel safe at school. It says they feel heard. And just take that for a moment. We also heard that once they have this service, they're more likely to reach out and ask for other services. Slide. And this is what it looks like. This is our warehouse in Soto and those are volunteers and the food and the prepping and we have over 50 volunteers that show up with their cars, just like that, and off they go to the schools. We take it right to the front desk, so there's no barrier for the food to get to the kids. And I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Councilmember Oxiker.
Yes, you mentioned three schools that are, that you serve here in Des Moines. What was, what is the determination, you know, as just doing three? Is it, is it lack of capacity or?
Sometimes lack of capacity at the school's side or there might be a PTA that's filling the need. There's no lack of capacity on our side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Yeah, A Place at the Table, great film, encourage everyone to watch it. So I just wanted to ask, so you've got seven menus?
Yes.
That's impressive. That's more of a comment than anything else. I mean, how much work is involved in like, in other words, it would be easier to do one, right?
I started with one.
Yeah.
I started with one and we had a whole bunch of schools ask us like, do you have vegetarian? You know, we have a lot of halal students, you have vegetarian. And so I was like, God, how am I going to do this? Because at that point, I was like at 2,000 bags and we do it, as you can see, in a mass production. I couldn't figure out like how I was going to do individual vegan bag. And so why did I go from one bag to seven menus? I have no idea because I sent their survey out and those were the six other menus that they said were highly needed. And so we developed a nutrition committee that has individual from each of those menus, cultures, living it so that we're hitting the right menu items. And we are always surveying and we want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students because I was like naive. I was like, okay, if your school is getting 100 standard bags and now you have seven to choose from, you're still going to get 100 bags, but you're going to have different flavors. And that's not how it worked at all. You went up from 100 bags to like 140 bags and I'm like, oh my gosh, why? Because the gluten-free kids couldn't eat the standard bags. The kosher kids didn't have stamps that they could eat them. So we were underserving the actual need of the students and we just went like, oh my God, this is awesome. We're meeting their needs. Oh my God, I've been doing this for eight years and I haven't been meeting their needs. And so it was a big learning circle and we're very glad that we took that jump. But yes, it was a lot of work.
Well, thank you. And just one other thing, just for the public, the actual, the total number of kids on the McKinney-Vento is like way, 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 way higher than 69.
69, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm just, just wanted to make that clear that there's a.
Yeah, for those three schools, that's what their capacity is. We try and verify their MKV at every school. So I think one had 20 students that they received. So let's say their MKV student was 18. We also find that the free and reduced lunch students, the FRL kids, sometimes are more food insecure than the MKV kids because if a MKV kid is in a shelter, they might have a meal program built in. So they may get the support. If a free and reduced lunch, and that's someone who's getting a penny off all the way to free, they may have a mom and a dad in a house and an income and cars and everything, but something's happening in their life that they're having to prioritize medical bills or an emergency or someone lost a job, trying to keep the roof over their head and not food. And so we, and they don't qualify for quite the same services. So we try and reach further than the MKV, but yes, it, we have seen a 30% increase since September when schools started.
Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Just let me say, this is a fabulous program. I really am impressed with what you're doing and the variety. And I'm sort of hearing from you that this has been a learning experience all along and the growth of your organization, you know, and how to best serve these kids' needs is, is just a wonderful thing to hear. Des Moines is one of the cities that is actually split between two school districts. Any chance you're going to move into the Federal Way School District anytime soon or at least the edge of it?
We offered. We offered and I launched a coalition when I started for Seattle called Food for Schools and I bring together all the people that do this work in Seattle, that's eight, and every school in Seattle School District is partnered. And we're wanting to expand and say in the next five years, we want every child in King County to be taken care of. So I started a coalition year before last to bring all the King County people doing this work together, to learn from each other, to break down silos, to offer help for school districts that aren't meeting the potential of all of the need and saying, we're here. And so I also started a purchasing program for those doing them. And so like Kent Rotary, University Food Bank, we purchase at such a large rate that if you walked into Costco and bought applesauce, maybe 70 cents a little cup. We go to business, Costco Business, probably 60 cents, but we're buying on pallets and a whole truckload, so we're buying for 32 cents. So I then offer your food bank, your meal program, if you want to save money, you can buy from us at the exact penny. We, not admin cost, nothing, the exact 32 cents we pay. We, not admin cost, nothing, the exact thirty-two cents we pay, because hoping that then you have more capacity with your budget to feed more kids, because that's what we all want. So, yeah, we've offered help.
Fantastic work and good, good information there. It's, it makes me proud to say that we're supporting your organization.
Yes, and thank you for the fun.
Yeah, so just for the public, for a little bit of clarity, if somebody is interested in getting more information or volunteering?
Yeah, just email me. I'm, it's me. You can do info@backpackbrigade.org. And that's our website, backpackbrigade.org. So, and that's only because I was running the food bank, and I went next door to the school, and I said, is this really a thing? And they said, yes. I said, how many kids? They said, eight. I went to the food bank, I scooped stuff up, and I walked over and I put it in their backpack. Program was born.
Thank you so much. Great work.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you, Nichelle. Just so the council's aware and the public's aware, for the last two-year cycle, the Human Services Advisory Committee recommended funding thirty-five thousand dollars over a two-year period for this organization, and that was approved by the council, so. Moving on to the next item, we have a presentation on the Port of Seattle's Land Stewardship Program, and that will be presented by Chipper Maney, the program manager. Thank you. I always like to present to a roomful of smiling faces, so I appreciate you letting me be on the docket after the Backpack Brigade. Thank you, Mayor Buxton, and council members and staff, and community members. Thanks for the shout-out, Barbara. Thanks for letting me talk to you today about the Port's environmental land stewardship The agenda tonight, I'm going to walk through the background of the program, a summary of public comments that were provided as part of the program, a response to those comments, and what you can expect coming up with the commission process at the port. So this is background. In two thousand twenty-three, the port, the commission adopted an order for, to implement environmental land stewardship principles and strategies at the airport. Pursuant to that, two of the strategies that are coming before the commission in the month of March for adoption, and those strategies are intended to support comprehensive application of the, the principles. And those two strategies include the land stewardship plan for the airport and a new set of tree replacement standards for tree clearing activities at the airport. The port implemented a public engagement process as part of the development of the land stewardship plan and standards. And we received a number of comments that we appreciated and responded to as, as part of the review and adoption of the plan and the standards. The port-wide environmental land stewardship principles are five-fold. They focus on, in trying to ensure that land stewardship is applied comprehensively across all port programs and policies, and that with particular attention to capital program integration. The principles ask us to use an equity lens when we're applying land stewardship to airport programs and processes, and to facilitate community partnerships, and to make sure that we're using the most current holistic ecological practices to plan and implement land stewardship actions. So in terms of the land stewardship plan itself, the guidelines for the plan are to implement the land stewardship, support implementation of the land stewardship principles in addition to protecting and restoring habitat and connecting and expanding habitat on, on airport property. And again, consistent with those principles, the plan asks us and provides specific actions for establishing community partnerships and offsetting tree clearing impacts. There's a major equity component in the land stewardship plan. The objectives include direct language, requiring the integration of community equity considerations in the land stewardship planning. We inventory a range of community equity attributes to inform land stewardship planning, including identifying sites that provide visual buffers between airport operations and community areas, sites that have actual public access. We also mapped and indexed the heat island effects in the city, which indicate areas that do or do not contribute towards increased temperatures in urban areas. The port has also developed as part of its equity index, its own port equity, or equity policy, excuse me, its own port equity index, that we also use to inform stewardship actions. And essentially, the sites with the poorest scores for equity, or that have the highest potential to lift equity, are the sites that we would prioritize for stewardship actions, because those would be, provide the most community benefit. Moving on from the land stewardship plan to the tree replacement standards, all the cities surrounding the airport have tree replacement standards, the city, including the city of Des Moines. The port has its own jurisdiction, as defined by an interlocal agreement with the city of Sea-Tac. And currently, the port does not have tree replacement standards for its jurisdiction, which is identified in the blue shading on the map. So we wanted to fill that gap and make sure that we're meeting or exceeding the regional best practices for tree replacement. And so we developed our own tree replacement policy directive. The tree replacement directive uses a four-to-one replacement ratio, so exceeds, for example, the city of Seattle's new three-to-one replacement standard. But we use a forest health approach. So instead of looking at, instead of just planting trees to replace trees, the port has really broad areas of contiguous open space habitat that are highly, that are forested, approximately four hundred and thirty acres of forest at the airport. So our approach is to try to integrate a holistic stewardship of those areas in ways that you can either plant a new tree, you can protect existing mature trees from invasive threats, and we can restore invasive areas to native understory. And each of those three types of activities can generate a credit towards tree replacement. And so in this way, our approach is intended to holistically improve the health of the port's forests that we own. In terms of next steps, obviously, tonight, we're presenting to the Des Moines City Council. And Monday, March fourth, we are planning on publishing a blog that addresses the public feedback and the questions we received as part of the public engagement process for the land stewardship plan and the tree replacement standards. We also plan to email all the webinar, webinar participants and commentators that provided comments directly with a link to the blog. And citizens are welcome to go on to the port website and just type in land stewardship, and you will be able to find a link that provides, or that provides a link to the land stewardship plan document, the tree replacement policy, and all the public comments in response to blog posts. So while the public comment period is over, there's still an opportunity to review the materials. And then wanted to remind everybody also, that Saturday, March ninth, we're having our own community stewardship event as part of land stewardship. The port puts on, the airport, excuse me, puts on two community stewardship events a year, and happy to facilitate that in the run-up to the commission notification and adoption of the land stewardship plan and the tree replacement policy directive at the two commission meetings in March. And I think that's the end of my presentation, so I'm happy to try to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, councilmembers. Any questions? Councilmember Mahoney first, and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz next.
Good to see you again, Chipper.
Thank you.
You know?
Good to see you.
When I first saw this presentation at the Highline Forum, I was really happy to see, you know, a, a system or a process to get rid of some of the invasive species. My question would be, particularly in Des Moines area, can you talk about the priorities that are on our section of town and where they are, and kind of when your plan to help us remove some of those invasive species? And, and for those of you that, I think you kind of mentioned it, but there's opportunities to remove the invasive species and save bigger trees. And it's, it's a great fix, because you can plant three or five, but trying to replace one in the years it takes to grow one, if we can save one now, it's a, it's, it's a far more bigger asset to us. So just talk about how you, the priorities, particularly in our town, would be appreciated.
That's a great question. Thank you very much. Most of the property that we have, I hit, unfortunately, for Des Moines is in the city of Sea-Tac. But south of Two Hundred Street, in Des Moines Creek Park, we have a couple of community planting sites that receive some of the highest priority for stewardship. So that's the, that's the first thing. The south end of the airport has lower equity scores than the north end of the airport, and so a lot of those sites are prioritized for stewardship under the land stewardship plan. And, and the communities, in the greater communities, we also administer the South King County Community Impact Fund, and that is a grant program that's intended to fund community projects for environmental and social enhancements in the city of Des Moines and other neighboring communities. Excuse me. The other thing that we participated in as a public partnership with Des Moines Creek is part of the Des Moines Creek Basin Committee. The Des Moines Creek Basin Committee takes a watershed-scale approach to watershed restoration of hydrology and stream habitat. So we're happy to be public partners with the city of Des Moines and the city of Sea-Tac in that effort. And currently, they're planning additional maintenance and restoration actions as part of that committee.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, nice to meet you and a very nice presentation. I do like the idea that there are some steps in here to try to preserve the older trees. That's definitely a plus. I think it was a, a year or two ago, there were some trees along Memorial, Des Moines' Memorial Drive that were getting too tall, essentially, and they were completely taken down. How would that be addressed differently under the stewardship program? And isn't there a way that you could preserve an older tree by topping it if it, in fact, was getting too high?
Excuse me. Well, just to answer your first question about tree topping, tree topping is not consistent with the Wildlife Hazard Management Plan at the airport. It attracts raptors that perch on the tops of trees. So the port doesn't legally, isn't legally allowed to conduct tree topping? I'm sorry, I forgot your first, your first question. I apologize.
Yeah, the first one was the trees along Memorial.
Oh, yes.
Des Moines Memorial Drive that...
You might...
Essentially take them, take them all the way down, and they, they've been there for a long time.
Well, the King County built a trail along Des Moines Memorial Drive, and there was, there used to be some elm trees that were part of the Des Moines Memorial Drive cultural resources. Those trees got removed as part of the trail development plan. You might also be referring to the Flight Corridor Safety Program, where the port has to remove trees that penetrate the safe air flight floors. So for those, they went through an environmental review process, and we developed a replacement strategy through the State Environmental Policy Act review. The new tree standards provide an opportunity to formalize and standardize that tree replacement
Let's member Harris.
First of all, thank you very much for coming here tonight. So I guess I've just got a couple, like, maybe there are two in the weeds, but on a lot of your documents, there, there is a reference to equity lens and then equity index. Are they interchangeable, or do they mean different things? And I'm just...
Well, the policy asks us, the land stewardship principles and the port's equity policy asks us to apply an equity lens to port projects and processes. So the equity lens can be thought of as the policy. Okay? Now, the equity index is a tool that can be used to implement that policy.
That's the document. I mean, in other words, you've got documents that are labeled equity index and FAQs and so on.
Yes, the equity index is actually a tool. It's a, it's an assessment tool where they look at different indic, the port looks at different indicators of, of community equity, including environmental indicators, livability, economics, and I believe the last one is social. And so it's an index, so it has a range of different metrics, and it, and then adds up to a score. And so the port can use that scoring information and determine which neighborhoods around its facilities are most desperately impacted.
Right, right. I just mean, that's like a tool book, but the lens is more of a set of values.
Correct.
Okay, got it. So just to be clear, the port, the port doesn't have direct influence at this point on, like, the Des Moines Creek Business Park. I mean, that's up to city permitting standards, correct?
That's correct. The port owns property, and the port leased property to a private developer to develop that, that property. And so the private developer has designed the project and is conducting the permitting through the city of Des Moines.
Okay.
So the port has very limited authority to contribute to that permitting process. That's really the city's...
So your land stewardship, would it be fair to say that it applies to property that you take an active control in, you know, your building and?
Yes, that's correct. For the Des Moines Creek Business Park, the land stewardship does not indicate or suggest land stewardship activities, because the port does not control that property. The third-party developer controls the property through a ground lease, and they're responsible for the maintenance of the grounds through the lease, terms of that lease, and the conditions of the development permits they obtain from the city.
And two more, and hopefully they'll be fairly painless. So the stewardship plan is not a contract. In other words, like, the last page, the site prioritization example is very useful. Thank you. But, you know, you could choose as part of, like, the long-term projects or whatever, you, you could, you could start work on, you know, improving the forest and the critters and all of that stuff, and then the commission could decide, well, you know, we want to go in a different direction.
To some extent, that's correct. So I would say, yes, that the land stewardship plan has really two broader objectives, and the first is to identify places where we can do environmental stewardship actions. So where can we plant trees? And whether that's voluntary tree planting, or stream and wetland mitigation, or stewarding our existing two hundred acres of protected mitigation.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want people to think that because you're doing great work on a particular plot, that that binds the port in perpetuity to a particular, you know, purpose.
That's correct. It is a plan, not a policy directive, so there's nothing in the land stewardship plan that binds the port to taking a certain land use approach.
Thank you.
Or our properties.
And last...
What the land stewardship, I'm sorry.
No, you know, no.
What the land stewardship plan is intended to do is provide important information to capital projects and processes, so that leaders can make informed decisions. And so, for example, if a property, a ten-acre property has a six-acre wetland on it that's regulated by the state, state and federal governments, that is encumbering the property, then that's important information for decision-makers to be able to know to determine whether the site should be developed or used for land stewardship. One of the other ways that the land stewardship plan supports development is that it identifies properties that we have with the potential for stream and wetland mitigation. And that's a very sustainable way that the land stewardship plan can support economic development, because it enables the economic development while providing planning and design-level information regarding enabling stream and wetland mitigation.
Okay, cool. Like, last but not least, so I'm really interested in the, the four-to-one credit. I, I would agree that just saying, you know, whatever, pick a number, tree replacement is not necessarily the most fabulous way to go about it. But do you have, and I can get this offline, but I'm interested in how you score, like, the value of, of ivy versus a tree versus...
In terms of the credit-based approach?
Yeah, like, how you came up with that, that system, that, you know, a certain amount, like, you have two hundred square feet of land, ivy removal. I'm, I'm just, yeah, I'm just nerding out on, on...
Yeah, the, the way we came up with the two hundreds, so it's, plant one tree, generates one replacement credit. That seems pretty intuitive. Protecting one mature tree seems pretty intuitive, too. So it's a very good question. How do we come up with the, with the replacement quantity for the invasive? for the invasive restoration? And the way we did it was, we, we assumed the average canopy of a mature tree. So essentially the concept is, is that we have an area, and if we remove the ivy, we can restore the native understory and plant a tree there that eventually will cover that 200 square foot canopy. So it is kind of associated with the area that would be required for one tree to be planted.
So the only thing, my little pushback for what it's worth, is that, um, in areas like the Des Moines Creek Business Park, I mean, it wasn't a forest. It was a property buyout that evolved into being, and, and any arborist would say, well, you know, it's not really a forest, and it isn't, you know, these trees, many are not healthy, and they're not old growthy and so on.
Right.
And so it begs the question, you know, if these trees aren't 100 years old, depending on one's point of view, you could simply say that none of those trees are, you know, worthy of restoration or, um, because they're just leftovers from, um, you know, removing homes and so on. So tha- that to me is the gray area of, um, the area that you retain for wildlife and for stuff. It's not an organic thing that was here 150 years ago. And so how do you, how does that work within this, um, credit system? I mean, I'm being rhetorical here, but, but it, I think it really is worth consideration. And, you know, that's just my little privilege thing, so I'll, I, I hope we can talk about that more offline.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, um, I, I guess that I would say that again, uh, the intent of the land stewardship plan is to take a forest health approach, and you're absolutely correct. A lot of the forest land around the airport and in the cities of Sea-Tac and Des Moines, it's a highly urbanized and disturbed area. So over time, that level of disturbance in and around the edges of the commu, of the, uh, open spaces allows for degradation due to invasive species, right? And so a big component, so we wouldn't be able to even just go out and say, let's go plant some trees, because we wouldn't be able to make them successful. We have to take a holistic approach to our forests that, um, that we, where we, where we looking at process, sort of process restoration, um, and providing, providing opportunities to both not only protect the existing resource, but enhance the existing resource as well. So I guess I have to push back a little when you say that the trees, for example, in Des Moines Creek Business Park, don't, don't provide function. They do in fact provide function. They, I agree with you, they don't provide forest function, but they do some, provide some level of function. And so the choice is to just discard that land, I guess, uh, if it was, had stewardship potential and do nothing, or work to try to, in, in a framework that will actually lead to a successful outcome.
Yeah.
So just planting trees won't lead to that successful outcome, but a more holistic approach where we're trying to do a, a comprehensive vegetation management actions, uh, we feel will lead to not, uh, you know, great increased tree canopy in addition to improve health and function of the habitat that the forest is providing.
Okay, good, good. And I'll, I'll, I'll just leave it there except to say that, you know, if you, if we, you know, if WashDOT hadn't bought land, you know, right through the middle of Des Moines, that would, we wouldn't have too many trees left. And so I, I'm just, we, you have this land that you can either, um, you can either make it into a healthy, some kind of healthy tree canopy, or you could, depending on your point of view, you could simply use that as an excuse since, um, it's not particularly healthy. Depending on your, you know, philosophy of life, you could also say, well, you know, it's not very healthy, and so let's put up some more, uh, you know, warehouses. So anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Oxker.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Is there any kind of timeline, uh, with regard to this plan? I mean, you've, you've outlined when you expect to adopt it, but I mean, is there, you're hoping to accomplish these tasks over a certain period of time?
Yes. The plan has a very detailed set of obje, of goals and actions that go along with the five objectives. So, uh, unfortunately, we didn't have the time to go into that level of detail. I would say there's a set of about 30 different actions associated with those objectives that are listed in the land stewardship plan. A lot of them we have already accomplished. So part of the land stewardship plan isn't to implement new work, it's to formalize and, and make programmatic the work that we're already doing, uh, so that we can be more efficient and successful at the outcomes, and then have a better opportunity to be able to communicate those achievements to the broader community.
Thank you.
Excellent. So, uh, one question, a little bit of clarity, this event on March 9th, uh, is that, are you gathering the community for volunteer work, or this is a presentation opportunity?
Oh, no, this is a, you're going to get your hands dirty.
Okay, good.
So we, uh, generally have one event a year in the fall that we do planting, and then we have one event in the spring that we're going to plan to do invasive removal.
So if somebody wanted to find out the details about getting involved or going down and volunteering, where, where, where do you go to look it up, or you can mention it here?
Um, you can go to the port website and search for land stewardship or community planting event, and you should be able to find a link, uh, pop up directly.
Okay. And, uh, that was really, that was the only thing, so thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So, yeah, bring your rubber boots and jackets and gloves, right?
Uh, rubber boots and jackets and gloves, yes, they're the smart, so there's a decent likelihood that it's going to rain. And you will provide all the tools. We also provide a hot breakfast, uh, at the beginning, um, and coffee. So bring your appetite, and we look forward to seeing anybody there that would like to join us.
Great, thank you so much for your work, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I have one final item, um, and that is an update on the city manager recruitment process. The, I would like to call up, uh, our Assistant City Manager AJ to provide an update on where we're at with that.
Uh, good evening, council, community members, staff. Um, I'm here, uh, my name is AJ, should probably reintroduce myself. I am the Assistant City Manager of the wonderful city of, city of Des Moines in Washington State. Um, I'm here to provide an update on, um, our RFP. If you'll recall, um, I'm, came to the council meeting probably, uh, January 17th or sometime in January, and we went over the requirements for the request for proposal for the city manager recruitment. So we are looking now to secure an executive search recruitment firm to perform that recruitment for the city manager. So, um, during that meeting, we decided that the timeline, uh, for the selection process would be that, uh, we would release it on Friday, January 19th, and that the proposals would be due, uh, Tuesday, February 20th. So I'm happy to report that we received six RFPs, which is really good. And so the plan moving forward now, according to the timeline, we'll start our initial proposal review Tuesday. And so what, um, me and my team are working on now is reviewing the RFPs, make sure for completion. So not whether they can do the job that the council, um, is going to have them secure the services for, but just making sure that they have the pieces of information that we requested as part of the proposal. And so we'll work on also carrying those forms. On Tuesday, I'll be sending an email to the council members of all of the RFPs and to include the evaluation criteria that you guys established through the RFP, so you can start your review process. While that's happening, um, we will be calling the references with a list of questions, which will be provided to the council on Tuesday, um, asking information about, um, things like, what was your search process from start to finish? What type of support did this company provide, um, prior to posting during and after the selection of the candidates? AKA, who's doing what? Asking them, you know, was the firm able to provide flexibility to meet any unique requests? In other words, you know, was it, hey, this is our process, and this is how we recruit? And, um, you know, uh, city council, this, you need to make your recruit, your recruitment fit our, our, sort of off-the-shelf? We'll be asking questions like, what was the quality and quantity of the applicant pool? Do you feel that they provided adverse pool of applicants? What's your opinion on how they assessed candidates? And so on and so forth. And so, uh, when you receive the RFPs and, uh, the evaluation criteria with those list of questions, I would encourage the council, if I'm missing something that you're interested in hearing, please let me know so I can add that to the references question. The other thing I want to state is that, um, all I'm doing, or all we'll be doing in this process is just collecting information. So I'm not making a judgment on whether they can meet the needs of the council. I'm just collecting the information to bring that back to the council so they can use that as part of their evaluation. So, um, in the original proposal timeline, what we said is that we would be making our selection on March 14th. And, uh, by we, I mean, the council would be making their selection of the recruitment firm. So in order for you guys to be able to do that effectively, um, on March 7th, I will come back and present the feedback that I received from the references, so you have that as part of your decision-making, in the hopes that by the time, uh, we come to the council meeting on the 14th, you'll be ready to select the firm.
Thank you. Any questions for AJ? Excited to get that information, thank you.
All right, nice to meet you. Have a good evening, guys.
Thank you, AJ. And that concludes my report. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, replacement of copiers. Item four, Women's History Month Proclamation. And that concludes the consent agenda, mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney. Do I have a second? Uh, I'll give it to Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. For the second. Is there any item that a council member wishes to pull? All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's six-zero. Unanimous, good. And I have a proclamation here to read for Women's History Month. Whereas throughout American history, women and girls have made vital contributions, often in the face of discrimination and undue hardships. And whereas courageous women marched for and won the right to vote, campaigned against injustice, shattered countless barriers, and expanded the possibilities of American life. And whereas, our history is also replete with examples of unfailing bravery, the grit of women in America, particularly in times of crisis and emergency. And whereas, women served our nation during World War II, led organizing and litigation efforts during the Civil Rights Movement, and represented the United States on the, on a global stage in the fight for human rights, peace, and security. And whereas, far too often, their heroic efforts and their stories have gone untold, especially the millions of African-American women, immigrant women, and others from diverse communities who have strengthened America across every generation. Now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims march as Women's History Month, and urges all residents to join them in this recognition. Signed, this 22nd day of February, 2024, Tracy Buxton, Mayor. Thank you. Now, uh, we are going to address some unfinished business, so that we're going to have a discussion about an, um, a fund that we discussed a couple of weeks back, the Hearts and Minds Fund. The purpose of this item is for the council to approve the expenditure of the remaining balance of the Hearts and Minds Fund. The motion in the packet is in response to the stated desires of a majority of the council at our February 1st study session. So before we do begin the discussion and take a motion, I'd like to ask the city manager to bring a little clarity about the Stephen J. Underwood Memorial donations, $2 for Scholars. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, so, um, Dollars for Scholars is a nonprofit organization. Many groups fund scholarships through them for different purposes. And it was interesting tonight how the Yacht Club mentioned that they have three scholarships. So they fund three scholarships through Dollars for Scholars in the name of the Yacht Club. And so groups provide funding, um, and then they state the parameters, they state the name and the purpose of the scholarship, and then, um, Dollars for Scholars helps facilitate that. So the city council has historically provided funding through Dollars for Scholars for a scholarship in the name of Officer Stephen J. Underwood. And that has generally been a thousand dollars or $2,000, depending on the amount of funding available in the Hearts and Minds Fund. That's made on an annual basis, um, and once that money is provided to them, they will set that aside and, um, provide that funding to the scholar. It's usually around May or June, towards the end of the school year. So that's how that process works.
All right, thank you. So it's not a separate bank account or a separate fund? They just, they separate it out like on a balance sheet?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, during our March 7th meeting, coming in conjunction with our proclamation honoring Stephen J., Stephen J. Underwood, the council will be presented with an opportunity to honor his memory through perpetual donations, but that's a different discussion, so that'll be next week, or a couple of weeks. So the discussion tonight will solely revolve around the dispersment of the existing Hearts and Minds Funds, which may include a donation if the council wishes. And how much is that again? Uh, $4,007? Okay, thank you. So, uh, right now, I'd like to open it up for a motion. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I move to approve the expenditure of the remaining balance of the Hearts and Minds Fund in support of the Stephen J. Underwood Scholarship awarded by Des Moines Dollars for Scholars.
Do I have a second? Okay. Fails for lack of a second, do I have another motion? Councilmember Oxker?
I would move that we, uh, split the donation, uh, we're traditionally doing a thousand dollars to Stephen J. Underwood that we, we.
Councilmember, I think there's a model motion in there where you can fill in the blank. There's a model motion, there's a recommended motion where you can just say a thousand dollars?
Okay, I move the approve, to approve the expenditure of $2,000, uh, from the Hearts and Minds Fund to support the Stephen J. Underwood, uh, scholarship, uh, and, but then the balance to go to, uh, Backpack Brigade.
Do I have a second? Second by Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Open for discussion. Councilmember Mahoney.
I reached out to the president of Des Moines Dollars for Scholars, Vicky Burquist, and I told her what the situation was. What she told me was that currently the Stephen J. Underwood Scholarship is fully funded and for some time. What she said was that their biggest issue and need was that, uh, they were trying to get a board, don't, because anything that's donated as a scholarship has to be a scholarship. But what she said was their operational costs, where they're always asking for money and other things like that, was the greater need at this time. She thought that, uh, as, that we had done it, the Police Guild had contacted her and assured her that they would continue to fund the, fund this scholarship in the future, and not something that I advertise. I've given over $7,000 since I've been on council to help fund the Stephen J. Underwood. They contacted me last year and asked me if they could move the money to, um, an, another scholarship. If you're going to move the money, my recommendation is that you can, you fund some of it for their operational costs, and I don't have a number for that, and you open it up to whatever the need might be for other scholarships. Rather, we all want to honor, we can do it in honor of Stephen J. Underwood, but, um, but, uh, the need seems to be elsewhere. So I just want you guys to know that.
Okay, are you, uh, are you wanting to make, uh, friendly amendment?
Well, yeah, this is, this is where, if it was a friendly amendment, it would be, it would be something to the effect that, uh, that in honor of Stephen J. Underwood, rather than to the scholarship, that, uh, a thousand dollars to the, or half the money would be, I guess a quarter of the money would go to a scholarship, and a, uh, and, and, and another thousand some and change would go to their operational cost. And then as far as the, uh, um, well, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to rescind my motion. I'm not going to even make a friendly motion because, um, the problem is, is that, uh, in this particular case, like the Backpack Brigade, it's a great organization, but this is, this is the cusp of, of why the, uh, why this, this, the, the Hearts and Minds Fund was a, a working thing where we were able to do stuff. We were actually, the reason why I voted to disband it is the fact that we could, we, we would have given it, it would have taken away the ability to give to somebody like the Backpack Brigade and so forth, and I staunchly disagree with that. So in this particular case, if you're going to do it, um, then I think they, their greater need is for other scholarships and, uh, for, uh, and for operational cost. And, uh, and then again, I think there's a lot of other organizations in the community, um, in, in addition to. addition to the Backpack Brigade that could use the money, and not necessarily funded by the city.
Okay.
Anyway, so I'm, what I'm saying is in discussion and information is I'm not going to support that motion.
All right. Does anybody else have a friendly amendment? Or a discussion with, and another option that they want to discuss besides that one?
Point of order, you need to process this motion.
He withdrew his motion, so we're still in discussion of the main motion. Councilmember Mahoney withdrew his friendly amendment. So, we're still in discussion over Councilmember Oxiger's motion, which was $1,000, $2,000 to Stephen J. Underwood, and the balance to the Backpack Brigade. Okay? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I'm not making, I'm speaking in favor of the motion that's on the table.
Okay.
You know, the one thing that sort of occurred to me is there is a certain symmetry to making two contributions. One, to kids who are going to move on and have a scholarship, and presumably are going on to higher education. The other is to younger children, although not exclusively, who are literally at risk from going hungry, and they're not going to be high performers like the other. And you have a certain symmetry there that allows us to support both ends of the spectrum. And I think that is an appropriate way for us to disperse these funds.
Okay. Any other comment? I, okay. Councilmember Mahoney.
I'll take my second.
Okay.
I just want to say that I have no issue with the organizations that likely this money will be donated to. It's about the principle of what a good cause we had and a good vehicle for council to directly place money into the needs of organizations. And I'm only voting in protest, I would only vote against this in protest of that. I thought we had a great program that wasn't broken and it didn't need to be fixed, and now we are with what we are today. Thank you.
So, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment. If you would be open to that, based on the conversation that we're having here, and instead of choosing one particular organization that is already funded significantly by our Human Services Advisory Committee, that we take the $2,000 as you recommended for Stephen J., and that the balance go to our Human Services Advisory Committee to disperse as they feel, feel fit and as they have vetted, which organizations they have vetted. So, would you receive that? Well, I think I need to ask him if he would receive that friendly amendment first.
Yeah. I mean, we're not going anywhere unless the person that made the motion would like to accept that amendment.
Point of order. It's the body's motion after a person makes it, and so it doesn't need to be accepted by the person who makes the motion.
Okay, that, that.
So, we vote on whether or not we accept her recommendation?
Well, what happens is he has.
He doesn't have, I guess I'm saying is, the original person who makes the motion doesn't have to accept or not accept.
Yeah.
It's the vote.
Well, that, yeah, that would be if she made a motion to amend. This is, we've, we've done this friendly amendment thing for decades here. So, it's more of an informal amendment of the motion by the, by the individual that made the motion. I believe that's what's, that's what's being requested here. But certainly, the mayor could make a motion to amend, which would then require a vote of the council to, it would require a second, yeah, and then a vote of the council.
Or a death of the first one, and then a whole new motion. One of the two. Okay. So, are we going with that? Ask him if he is amenable to that?
Point of order.
Okay. Yes.
We had a vote at our study session that was not accepted as a friendly emotion to an amendment, to a motion that I made, and so we have not followed that procedure forever. We, in fact, deviated from it in our last meeting. So, we could go with just a vote of whether or not this is an amendment to this emotion.
Yeah, and I think that the friendly amendment was denied, but what I'll say, just to get us moving here, because Councilmember Oxiger hasn't said yes or no, so let's just assume that's a no, and have the council vote on the mayor's requested amendment, which first requires a second, so.
I second Mayor Buxton's motion.
Okay, for the subsidiary motion, I guess is what you call, and it's been seconded. So, how do you feel about that, councilmember? Are you okay with that? Okay. So, any discussion on that? On the amendment? Councilmember Harris.
I think that giving the money over to the Human Services Advisory Committee under the circumstances is the most equitable solution, and I would agree with Councilmember Mahoney that this is not a, an ideal situation, but allowing the Human Services Advisory Committee to evaluate this is, makes the best of the situation. Thank you.
Any more comments about that, the amended amendment? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I would echo the sentiment of Councilmember Mahoney and Harris, that this just, you know, it's really, really bad form up here. We had a good system. But that being the case, I would speak in favor of the amendment to send, I think it's $2,000 to the Stephen J. Underwood Scholarship through Dollars for Scholars, and the balance to the Human Services Committee to be distributed accordingly. I think that's a fair and reasonable way to do it.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Okay, at this, at this late date in the discussion, is it possible to accept it as a friendly amendment?
Well, we would just vote for the amendment and then vote for the motion. There would just be two votes here.
Okay.
Okay? So, I'd like to call the vote on the amendment. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Harris, and myself. All opposed. Councilmember Mahoney opposed. So, that was in regard to the amendment. The amendment passes. Any further discussion on the amended motion? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I would say that, just for clarification, and I know this sounds like administrat, trivia to most folks who might be here, that I was disappointed by the outcome of our votes and the conversation, frankly, that we had around the purpose of Hearts and Minds, because generally, I believe that our council agreed on three of four points. And because we couldn't come to agreement on the fourth poll point, several council members voted to disband the fund rather than compromise, and that's one of the reasons that we're here as well. And so, unfortunately, you're seeing that come up again, that that compromise is just not willing to be there. So, unfortunately, this will be disbanded because we weren't able to come together on one point out of four. I do support this because I do think that it is more equitable, that there is a committee that looks at applicants that come forward that fulfill a certain number of requirements through the Human Services Advisory Committee, and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this before we take a vote? All right. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Harris, and myself in favor. All opposed. Councilmember Mahoney opposed. And passes. Five to one. Okay. Now, it's time for new business. This is a time for the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda that also have not previously been before the council. This is not a time for council action or questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? All right, then. We'll move forward to councilmember reports, and we'll begin with Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, mayor. No report.
All right. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I've testified in person in Olympia on the Port Package Update Bill that Representative Orwell was speaking to several times, and it's actually getting there. I've heard some, you know, complaints from the public that it's been whittled down, but you know, folks, that's actually how it works, and I was stunned that she showed up tonight because she's got to be back in Olympia at 8:00 AM tomorrow. I want to thank her for that. While in Olympia, I've been meeting with several other state reps on other environmental bills that will directly impact the SAMP, which is coming very soon, and I will encourage the city to add those bills to our next legislative agenda. The Port of Seattle is having a related meeting next Tuesday concerning port package updates, and I encourage everyone to show up. There is obvious cooperation between the port and the state to get port package update legislation going at both ends, and that is a very good thing. I attended the King County Emergency Management Advisory Committee meeting, which was held at their main center in Renton, and it is, I was given quite a tour. It's interesting because it's a hardened facility, and everyone agrees that the current electeds receive a certain amount of training in what to do in order to manage the continuity of government, and the one thing everyone agrees on is that this training needs to be made simpler. So, that pleased me. And I'm going to send along some pictures. They have a, something of a shrine to all of the various canine, there have been a surprising number of canine animals that have given their life in service, and I had no idea. I attended a, my first regional transit committee meeting, and the committee is specifically concerned with King County Metro, and I was also pleased to hear that everyone, and especially our neighbors in Federal Way, have similar concerns around providing last-mile service, especially with the upcoming light rail station. We, it's interesting to me, watching over the years, how people were sort of reluctant about the light rail, and now with the shuttle, it's just, people love it. And I believe if we can provide that same kind of shuttle service and connectivity in the south end of town, it will become equally enthusiastic, and I, I really, really, really want to make it easier for people to get from the light rail down to the Marina, to the College. I think it is just strategically of the highest importance to the city, and that's why I show up for those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Mahoney.
I'm just going to top on to Councilmember Harris's comments. Include redondo in that on those last miles. I think that's excellent. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I attended a community event last night that was actually a karaoke event, so if I sound a little froggy and feel a little groggy, that might be one of the reasons. And one of the topics of conversation that had nothing to do with singing, had a lot to do with how folks can be more informed about the important decisions that the city council are, are making. And I had a great conversation with the constituent about the role of digital communication, and how he and his family would prefer to receive information from the city. And I hope that if you have suggestions for any of us at city council about how we can better communicate some of the upcoming decisions that we have, and what ways that you may participate, that you can contact us at our city email address individually, or to citycouncil@desmoineswa.gov, I believe is correct. And I do hope that folks consider getting involved at the beginning of those types of processes, and I know that it feels like your wishes or perspectives are not heard when you come at the very end of a decision-making process, and that's a very natural feeling, like, why didn't I know this was happening, and why couldn't I give my input? And I just encourage folks to find ways to seek out that information and get involved sooner, and if you have ideas about how we can do that better, please let us know, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you, mayor. On Valentine's Day, I got to attend the Sound Cities Association's Public Interest Committee. There weren't that many people whose spouses were objecting. I was surprised. But nonetheless, it was the first meeting of the year. It always happens on, I guess, the second or third, second Wednesday of the month, and that's why it just happened to end up on Valentine's Day. So, there was an orientation for the new members. There were a lot of legislative update. Most of the legislative update was, well, you never know until the session's over. And so, that was the, you know, what was a topic of discussion, but also the big, the big topic is the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, which, you know, is, is just a huge entity that has been created. And there were really a number of concerns raised about how they're distributing their funds. They basically are contracting with various community providers, but there's no sense of, you know, Des Moines has put in X number of dollars through their property taxes, and Des Moines gets back X number of dollars through their property taxes. There's, there's no one-to-one for this at all. In fact, they're, they're not even looking at coverage, they're looking at who can comply, and they want to contract with. And as a consequence, I think that's, that's a serious flaw in the way that they're going about this. The other issue that was raised repeatedly, and Mayor Buxton appeared, participated in the point-in-time count, and she raised that issue, and when I brought it up, several people agreed, that the questions that they're asking are not designed to get at a lot of the root problem of homelessness, because, for example, substance abuse. If a homeless person feels that substance abuse is why they're there, that's a key piece of information in how you're going to help get that person out of homelessness, and that question just simply was never asked. So, there, there seems to be some issues in their data collection, in how they're going to then contract with providers in the community to do certain services, because if they don't know what people who are homeless need or see as their biggest problem, it's really hard to address it. Mayor Buxton and I met with Jennifer, who is our consultant to the Citizens Advisory Committee. We got their priorities and, and had a little exchange there, and we are looking to get the Citizens Advisory Committee up and running just as soon as possible. I attended the Marina Steps presentation that was referred to earlier tonight. It was really an excellent, excellent presentation. It went through a lot of the history. There were boards around that you could look at before the presentation started, and then, I think even more importantly, is there were staff people at each board who could answer the questions that the community wanted. I think there was, I'd guess, 150, maybe somewhere right around in there, people that attended this meeting. It was, and, and it was very well done, and the Marina Steps seems to be pretty well-received at this point. And, you know, what Mr. Lynn Scott brought up, yes, there are other pieces that are going to connect into it, one piece at a time. If we spread ourselves too thin, I think we're going to end up with a mess, and we've got to keep focused on that. And then lastly, I think it was last Thursday night, Mayor Buxton and I attended the Federal Way State of the City address by Mayor Farrell, and it was a really impressive address. It's a much bigger city, and I'd urge anybody that's interested in seeing how they're doing things to go look it up on Federal Way's website, which is excellent, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, I, I am happy to come here tonight, full of great visits and chats and meetings with people in the community, my colleagues, staff. I feel very encouraged about the movement of our city, and even in the movement of our region. We've got challenges ahead, but got a lot of great people. We've got challenges ahead, but got a lot of great people working and giving their voices to good solutions in our region. So, coming up, I have another chat with the mayor. I hope to see you there Tuesday, March 19th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Woodmont Library. We, I had my first one a couple of weeks ago. It was a great opportunity to visit with folks. Thank you for, several of my colleagues for advocating in regard to airport issues. I think Councilmember Oxger's been down, Councilmember Harris has been down. Appreciate, in Olympia, this, this 5595, or 5955 anyway, it passed unanimously out of both houses. It's going to be in the Capitol Budget Committee tomorrow. It's just looking good, so we're happy about that. 33rd District legislators, actually, even, even the middle of session came down and gave a great town hall. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxger were both there. They talked about public safety, housing, homelessness, healthcare, transportation. I just appreciated all three of them just being available on a Saturday to, to come down and talk with the community. There was well over 100 people there. So, we have a lot of fun things coming up in the community, so I hope you all got your city currents, and you can check out all of our activities and things that we're offering. If you did not get a city currents, check it out online. Just go to the city website, look for city currents, and we've got a digital version. It even sounds like the page is turning when you click it. So it's very cool. So, fun things coming up. All right, so now, at this time, we are going to move into an executive session to discuss potential litigation under RCW 42.30.1101i. The executive session is scheduled to last 30 minutes and will conclude at, that would be 9:10, correct? Nine, or eight, oh, yeah, 8:10. Excuse me, thank you.
Eight twenty.
Eight, 30 minutes?
Yes, eight twenty.
Oh, I'm looking at the eight. Thank you. Oh, what would I do without help? Insert actual time. We did, 8:20. Although the public is invited to stay, we will not be conducting any business after the executive session has concluded. Do I hit the, I don't hit the gavel for this. Wait, okay. Thank you.